I'd like to call this November 20th, 2008, meeting of the Cookville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Shipley, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
We have one addition, just make it item eight, consider approval of a change order to the contract with WNO Construction Company to install two new large-capacity pumps and two smaller-capacity pumps at the water intake on Center Hill Lake, sponsor Ronnie Kelly.
All right. Seeing no other additions to the agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have our motion, we have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Excuse me. Brings us to our old business portion of the meeting, item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on November the 6th, 2008. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have our motion, do we have a second? We have our second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing no discussion on the minutes, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight, items three and four. Item three is consider awarding bids for annual water meters for the Water Quality Control Department, and item four, consider awarding bids for transformers with the Electric Department. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. We have our motion and our second. Any discussion, or do we need to talk about any of those items? Seeing no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to our new business portion of the meeting, item five. And in item five, we have several sub-items here. Item five is to hold a public hearing and consider approval of contracts and documents related to the Highlands Business Park, sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley and Mike Davidson. Let's go to item five A, consider approval of addendum to interlocal agreement for the Highlands Business Park dated July the 28th, 2006. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, if you don't care, I think I want to defer item five A to the city manager.
All right.
Jim?
This is an addendum to the interlocal agreement that we signed with the county in July of 2006 to purchase and develop a mixed-use business park, now known as the Highland Business Park. The agreement provides that the city and county share equally in the cost of purchasing the land and building the infrastructure. The estimate to build the infrastructure in 2006 was $5 million, and that did not include any improvements to Lee Seminary Road or to Gould Drive. Did not include estimates for a bridge over the floodplain area, but the new estimates now are $14 million. That's prepared by Barge Wagner Sumner and Cannon. Next slide. No, I guess there's only one. So this agreement states that the city and county will share in that $14,400,000 total with 7.2 million each. And the 14,400,000 is a little bit of a cushion in that there's still some geotechnical work that's not included in these estimates. And then if, once the bids are done and if it's less than 7.2, that each of us need, that's all we'll issue. I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second. We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Okay. This particular part of the part does not include the actual issuance of bonds, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So...
We're going to consider that in items five E and five F.
Okay.
This is just changing the interlocal agreement, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Between us, this is primarily between us and the county, huh?
Correct.
Any further questions, comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to item five B, authorize the city manager to approve contract with Barge Wagner Sumner and Cannon to design road improvements and certain infrastructure for the Highlands Business Park. Mr. Shipley.
The contract with Barge Wagner is broken down into the different facets of the design, the water system design, 51,600, sewer system, 151,000, Lee Seminary Road design, 100,625. The interior road in the business park is 344,210. Gas system is $7,500 for a total of $654,935, which we will, I've instructed Barge Wagner to invoice the city for one half of that and invoice the county for one half of that amount. I would recommend approval.
Very good. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? We talked about the cushion in the 14.4 million. I'm assuming that we may be a year or two out on actual construction on this, or we, I'm assuming that they, and Ryan, maybe you can address that, do you think they build in, I mean, I don't want to be coming back, are these estimates going to be good for...
Of course, none of us really know what the costs are going to be in the last, I know just diesel fuel alone, which is a major component, and is a major component to a lot of this work, you know, we've seen it just in the last three months go from $4.59 to $2.50, so that's a dramatic change. So if fuel prices stay the way they currently are, I would say that we don't have any concerns, but I mean, if fuel goes to 5.50, then there would be some concerns because asphalt paving and all the equipment associated with that.
Well, Greg, I think Greg felt like that some of their estimates were still pretty high. So hopefully that'll be enough money. I mean, it's like Ryan said, you never know.
And it's a not to exceed?
It is a not to exceed now, yes.
And as it relates to these professional services, you know, we're paying half of this number.
Right.
It's 327,000.
Any further comments on item five B? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item five C, consider approval of payment in lieu of taxes incentive program. Mr. Shipley.
This is an incentive plan that several members of the chamber, Alan Ray, myself, quite a few people have worked on, it's been under consideration and been tweaked a long time. And the goal was to have some definitive plan that when you had a new prospect that came into town, or an existing industry that was planning an expansion, that you had some sort of schedule, some criteria to go by to try to be fair to everybody involved. What you see on the screen right here is just an example of company XYZ that's, maybe they're expanding and they're adding 25 new jobs, well, the capital investment in real property is 6 million, and in personal property, equipment of 5 million, and their average hourly rate is going to be $15 per hour. Under this schedule, they would get 1.5 points per job, 10 points per million for the capital investment, and the average hourly wage starts at, if it's less than $13 an hour, they actually lose points. If it's over that, then they start gaining, they start making some points. And that's a pretty long schedule, so I didn't involve it on this PowerPoint slide. But this project and this example would qualify for Schedule II, and I think there's five schedules that are laid out, and a Volkswagen plant would get Schedule V, which basically gives them a lot of tax abatement for many years. But under this example, there would be three years of tax abatement for real property and two years of complete tax abatement for the personal property, and then the next year they'd get 40%, and then the third year, 20%, and then the fifth year goes to, they'd pay 100%. And I think this is a really good plan. Like I said, it's been worked on a long time and discussed in several meetings of the Industrial Development Board and Chamber of Board meetings, and I think it's going to make us fairly unique in that we have something like this to go by, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second. We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Just a question, do, have you looked, did other cities that have similar plans, or is that kind of where you got an idea, or how did this evolve?
Well, I think most cities, and I'm talking off the top of my head, but I really think most cities just deal with the situation when it arises, and a lot like we've done in the past, you know, yeah, you're going to bring in 200 jobs, what do you want, basically? And I'm sure there'll be times when we have to bend around this to get what we need to do, but I think it's a great starting point and a great item to have in our folder when we sit down with these folks, and we can tell them right off the bat, here's what you entitled it.
Sounds good. I think it's also good because it incentivizes people to stay in Cookville if they've been in an existing business. I know a lot of times pilot programs, they incentivize the new, but they don't incentivize the existing.
Yeah.
And so when a company that are already in Cookville and been here for many, many years, they decide to make a real estate or equipment investment and employ more people, this gives them a reason to stay, because one of the arguments you hear a lot in communities, where I may go as far as construction services are concerned, you know, no one's here to help me, I've been here 35 years, but this is a formula that a new or an existing business can enter into as it relates to, and I'm excited about it because then, as people look at Cookville, they know this is the standard, they can at least function within this realm, and they can do their capital planning based upon that and know what to expect going forward. Instead of it being discretionary, it's just hard for someone, wouldn't want to be a CFO of a large company trying to figure out what somebody on any industrial board or any city council or county commission is trying to think about their project.
It seems like it's a level playing field.
My guess is that this may be used, this will probably be used more by existing industries for expansion than it will be for new companies, because a lot of times the new companies, such as Oreg, for example, issue industrial revenue bonds and they get the tax abatement anyway. So, but that's been one of the biggest criticisms of city hall, county government, the Chamber of Commerce over the years, is that, I've been here for 30 years, I've employed all these people, and you're not doing anything to help me except bringing in another company that's going to take some of my employees. So, I mean, this should rectify that situation.
It also encourages existing business to modify or retool their existing facilities that may be dilapidated 20 or 30 years old, because there's a benefit to actually spending the money. And I think that would encourage people to, as we look to be more efficient, as we've heard the Electric Department, the Water and Sewer Department say, they want to conserve these usages, this is a good way to encourage people to do that.
One question, is there some type of monitoring as far as the jobs that are created and the actual revenue, that we actually can look at their books and make sure that they're not just shooting us a line, so to speak?
That will be monitored by the Chamber of Commerce, won't it not, George? Diligently, right?
Yeah.
Industrial.
Any other comments? On item five C, any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item five D, consider approval of covenants and restrictions for the Highlands Business Park. Once again, Mr. Shipley.
I get that one, too. I think I've got a slide on that, but I can't, yeah. These covenants and restrictions, we're trying to put those in place because I think everybody concerned wants this business park visible from Interstate 40 to be a first-class business park. So these restrictions and covenants, they'll work a lot like they do in any residential subdivision. They set the design and appearance standards for the park, they restrict the height of signs, how many signs you can have, they restrict the type of construction for buildings, and like I said, the purpose is to ensure a high-quality business park. There is one provision in there that, the thing that made us all nervous was, yeah, you've got these very restrictive covenants in this park, and, yeah, you want everybody to have brick buildings or nice stone buildings, whatever, and then all of a sudden, a big prospect comes in that's going to give you 1,000 jobs, what do you do? This prospect says, we can only afford to build a steel building, but we're going to employ 1,000 people at $25 an hour. So we do have a clause in those restrictions that's in bold capital letters that says that the owners, which are the city and the county, can change those covenants or restrictions if they have to, if they need to, with the input from any existing company that's there. But we all felt like it was very important to not just totally restrict ourselves and miss out on a good prospect, because you might have one that says, no, I want to be in that park, I want interstate visibility, I don't want to be somewhere else. And we all know from experience that we do everything we can when those prospects arrive, or try to arrive. And I'll be, if I can, I'll answer any questions, if I can't, maybe George can, but I would recommend approval.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval.
Second. We have our motion and our second. I'll look for a discussion by the council.
I have one question. These two governments, of course, will control this. Will these two governments then set some kind of board or commission or some group that would then meet with and develop, the person, the owner of this business, so-called business, and he wants to vary a little bit from the standards that are here, or to have some leeway, then will there be certain representatives from the two governments that would sit and make, help make decisions about that? Have you discussed that?
Well, the attorney, the attorney for the Industrial Development Board is working on a separate agreement between the city and county that basically establishes a park management board, and we're not really sure who all is going to be on that board yet. That's still in the process.
Park management board.
They would also decide pricing of the properties or things like that as well?
Well, the pricing of the property, I think our estimate was, by the time we get in the infrastructure, it's going to be about $50,000 an acre. And my guess is that what, that's what we will establish at that point, somewhere around that $50,000 an acre. And then as a company, if someone wants to locate there, we'll run them through the incentive program and see what they, how many points they get, and if they qualify for a reduced price on the property.
Whatever that price is, will that be determined by the two governments? Will decide on that price based on the total cost that we have?
Yeah, I would think you'd have to, because the two governments are the owners.
No, I'm wanting to do that, I want to make sure that this is, there's something in, we have provisions in place that we are the ones that decide that. I don't want that left to a board to decide, since we're the owners, so...
Will there not be an appraisal? I mean, will we not go out there and...
Well, the property, we have appraisals on the property now.
Right, but, you know, since five years...
Once that infrastructure and everything goes in, then I would think we would...
It would need to be updated.
...just agree on that price, and I would suggest you make that part of your motion to approve, if there's already been a motion.
There has been a motion.
Well, we can make an amendment to that, then.
To actually, we're not, so that...
Let me ask you a question, excuse me. These covenants would not control the purchase or sale of the property, it's just the architectural design and development, so this would really, should really be the subject of a separate item of business, I think, rather than be part of this package.
No, actually, I mean, before we get ready to sell any property, there'll be plenty of times where we'll be back before the two legislative bodies.
No, and that's fine, I just want to make sure that we have something in place, whatever it requires us to do, to do that, so that it is, and not only is there a price set, obviously based on cost, but then it needs to change yearly or bi-yearly based on the appraisal of the property. As the property goes up in value, the price that we would ask for that would go up as well, so it's not, I mean, we ran into that on this old park out here where we're still selling stuff, the price is 20 years ago, and so...
And as it develops, it'll increase in value.
Increase in value, anyway, so...
That's why I don't want it to be, you know...
I don't want a fixed price, it stays that way forever until it's all gone, so...
Well, that was one thing that, actually Bob Duncan pointed out about the pilot program, is that there needs to be a inflation factor built into that hourly wage and to the price of the product. So, I mean, a lot of that hadn't technically been marked out yet.
So where would this need to be, what would we need to do to accomplish what we're trying to achieve there?
It may be a completely separate document, I don't think it'll be in any of these tonight.
I would think that would be in the operational document that I think Mr. Shipley indicated this other attorney was preparing, that would be the operational agreement between the city and the county, and then what items are referred back to the actual city council or the county commission to approve. Certain items are being reserved to them, and then you'd have to give that board some leeway and their authority on what they can do. But that's completely different than what we're talking about right now, and what's the subject of this motion.
Let me just have the clerk make a note of that, and I'll make sure I talk to that attorney, and we'll get that into that agreement.
But one of the questions that we didn't answer is that in Article IV of these covenants, it does describe how the approval process takes place, when a prospect is interested in Cookville, they have to submit a certain number of drawings, and that approval process is done through Article IV, they're able to submit those drawings. At that point, it's reviewed by the city of Cookville's planning department, up until this board is established. Since the county doesn't have a planning department, we already have those people on staff, our public works departments, then that's who's going to be handling the approval process until this board is established.
And it's my understanding, maybe George Hawford can address this, but that should somebody propose something here, and it seemed like it's not what we want in our park, that we will have a plan B to relocate them to another area within the Highlands, correct?
Certainly, yeah.
And, you know, certainly if that didn't work out, we would try to make, you know, adjustments, but I think that's kind of the key thing, is to have a place for different types of businesses and certainly work with the companies if we need to, but we do have that plan in place, I know George and I talked about that.
Well, and then the park is also in the city limits, so it would have to go through our planning commission and zoning regulations and things like that, anyway, just like any other city building would.
I think the plan is, is that all these plans will at first be reviewed by the city, and then they will go to this board, park management board. The city won't deal as much with the covenants and restrictions as much as just the building plans under the city code, but then it'll go to this board for the, and I've got a feeling that a lot of our city people will be sitting over there with them, helping them go through it, so...
I suspect so.
All right, good discussion. Do we have any more comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shipley. See, that was five D. Item five E, consider approval of initial resolution 081125 to authorize the issuance of not to exceed $7,200,000 general obligation industrial and business park bonds. Mr. Mike Davidson.
I would suggest that you consider E and F together, I mean, they're both the same item.
Let's see, yeah, let's, uh...
One is an initial resolution, the other is a detailed resolution.
The second one just sets forth all the basic covenants within that bond issue and all the details about it.
All right, upon Mr. Shipley's recommendation, we will consider item F, consider approval of resolution 081126 to authorize the issuance of $7,200,000 general obligation industrial and business park bonds, making provisions for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds. So we're to have a motion to approve items five E and F.
So moved.
We have our motion, and we have our second. Now, discussion by the council.
I was just going to... I could, just to kind of point out some things, there, these would be, if we issue the debt under these resolutions, would be general obligation debt, and just to kind of point out, I thought I had a slide in here, related to, there it is, kind of the debt service going forward for the city. Councilman Williams had asked this at the work session Monday, and just to try to show you, it doesn't eat up our debt capacity totally if we were to issue this 7.2 million in conjunction with the next item that's on the agenda, but basically, that's the bar graph there shows the fund balance in our debt service fund, and currently, right now, it's setting at about 4.5 million, it should reach close to 5 million at the beginning of fiscal, at the end of this fiscal year. And then as we issue that debt, what we've been trying to do is keep that fund balance not below 1.5 million dollars, and as you can see, where it levels off in 2015 is a potential to issue another $3 million there, so we still have a lot of debt capacity out there. If we were to issue this 7.2 million, it's not going to totally tie the hands of you all going forward, or even the next council going forward, there is debt capacity out there for other projects.
So this graph shows the reduction of that...
It shows that if, this is assuming that we issued 2.3 million, which is the next item on the agenda, this fiscal year. If we had to issue 7.2 million in fiscal year 2010 for this business park, it assumes those numbers, it's all in there, plus the other items I have listed of 1.2 million in fiscal year 2011, then in fiscal year 2012, another 9 million, we'd have to kind of wait until fiscal year 2015 and issue 3 million, and all those numbers are factored into this graph here, and you can see, we keep that fund balance at that 1.5 million dollar level, no lower than that. And that's based on our current tax rate, it's based on, basically, no projection increase in sales tax growth, so my revenue estimates are pretty conservative in that fund. So...
I appreciate you doing that. I know when we go over this budget time, this is one of the things we look at, as far as, I know Sam and Gene and Ricky, when they came here, there was not much room in the debt service capacity in, from the council prior to them, and so it was very difficult to do the business of the city, so we don't want to encumber any council coming after us.
You know, it's, were you finished?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You know, we've all, as we've gone through this council term, we've identified projects and infrastructure needs that we hope to accomplish, and certainly the increase in cost in this is, is going to somewhat, um, may not kill those projects, but it would certainly maybe postpone them, some of them, for a while. You know, this is, this is a project that, um, it's one of those things that, in a difficult economic time like we're in, you know, it's, you could probably easily step back and say we shouldn't do it, and, you know, there's part of me that, that realizes, maybe we shouldn't. However, the reality is, I know that if we don't do it, we're not in the game. We're not in the game at all. We won't be in the game, so, you know, it's kind of a, I think every day in life's somewhat of a gamble, and, and this is, this is a gamble. We're, we're betting on the future of our, of our community, uh, and what we can do and attract, and, and the possibilities that, that would be. I, I guess I, I want to make sure as we, as we issue this, and this may need to be an amendment, I know we're approving the issuance of this, but I would like for us to come back at whatever point, I know this has to be done for the, for the certificate of need, but I would like for us to come back before we actually issue bond, I would like for this council to vote on that again, if that's possible, however we need to word that, but I know we're, we're voting to issue the bond, but before we truly issue that bond and, and decide that, you know, this is where this money's going to be spent, then I want us to, I, I would like for us to vote on that again. So, can I make that in some type of a motion, that while we're, we're doing this for the public purpose, when we get ready to actually truly issue this, and, and we decide to lower the hammer on it, and we say this is absolutely where we're going, you know, whether that's six months from now or 18 months from now, I, I would like for us to vote on that again.
What's, um, uh, Mr. Rader, what's your opinion on that? I mean, were you making that?
I think, I think the, uh, it's my understanding that to, um, to fill it, to submit this application for this certificate, that we need the resolution authorizing the issuance of these bonds before they're going to consider that, so I think, um, I think you probably need to pass the motion as presented, and then if things change later on, uh, the council can always take a different direction before they are actually issued, but I think we need to pass it as presented, so that all of our documents are in order when they're submitted down to the, down to the Capitol to, um, to consider this application, and I'd, I'd be reluctant to put any kind of a restriction on that.
I think, I think it should be noted, though, that in this process, we, we have, uh, released the city to go ahead and provide engineering services for this park tonight, and that those funds have been voted on, and we're going to be spending those funds as of tonight, correct?
The engineering cost, I, I'm hoping and thinking that we can get, uh, those expenses paid out of our Economic Development Fund. We have some funds available there.
So we're not going to use the issuance?
We shouldn't have to issue this debt for that, no.
But when we come back to spend monies as associated with this project, whether it be six months from now or three years from now, it's still going to, it's still going to require a vote or a commitment on cities.
On those, on those construction, uh, bids, yes. That would require approval by this, uh, by this body, and I assume the county would too.
Which is the reason for the, the bond issue in itself? Do you foresee anything other than construction that would be decided upon without council approval?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
I, I, that's why I was trying to answer to Council.
Well, that's all I'm asking, is that before we, we spend the money that we vote on it, and it doesn't have to be in a motion, I mean, that can just be decided up here in, in a public forum.
Make sure that that's...
Right, that's all I'm, that's all I'm...
And you would, you would inform us if, you know, you always tell us if that's what's going on coming out of it.
I can't think of anything related to this project right now off the top of my head, other than those engineering and, and construction design work that, uh, we're going to have to have funds for, and like I said, we have our share of that cost in the Economic Development Fund. Uh, everything after that should be related to construction, uh, I can't really think...
Which the council will have to approve.
Have to approve, though, so I can't think of anything that, that we would do, uh...
Very good.
That council wouldn't be aware of at that point.
That's a good question. Thanks for bringing that up. Any further discussion by the council? Thinking of anything else? Any comments from the audience? Uh, yes, sir, if you could, uh, come to the lectern and then identify yourself.
My name's Jonathan Williams. I own a business here in Cookeville. I want to commend the council for doing something proactive to bring good paying jobs to our community. I also want to commend Ricky Shelton's skepticism. Um, I was a city employee from 1998 to 2002. During that time, I worked for the police department, and at that time, we were underpaid, understaffed, and we didn't have an adequate facility. We're still underpaid, understaffed, still don't have an adequate facility. 7.2 million's a lot of money, so just, uh, keep that in mind. Couple of years from now, we need to widen 10th Street, but the police department needs more resources. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate your comments. Any further comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley, Mr. Davidson, and Mr. Rader. Item six, consider approval of resolutions to issue bonds for certain public works projects. Uh, we have two items here. Item six A, consider approval of initial resolution 081127, authorizing incurrence of indebtedness not to exceed $2,350,000 to provide funding for certain public works projects.
Mayor and council members, if I could, again, this, this resolution has a partner with it. Item six, six B, if I could ask you to consider those collectively, uh, because they relate to the same issue, 2.35 million dollars. One is the initial resolution. Six B just authorizes us to execute that loan agreement.
Okay, so you want to consider six A and six B together, then?
Together, please.
All right, item six B is the, um, approval of resolution 081128, approving the execution and delivery, I hate to approve an execution, and delivery of one, one or more loan agreements for the purpose of providing funds for financing certain public works projects. Uh, we will, uh, do we have a motion to approve items six A and six B together?
No approval. Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council?
Again, will, will we, um, are, are we approving the actual items here, or are we approving the total, and, and then the items can, we can manipulate them around if we decide we want to do one or the other? Is that, are we approving this grid that we see on the board right here?
This, these items here make up that 2.3 million. The resolutions themselves are written generic enough to do street improvements, park improvements, so it, it doesn't have to be tied to these specific projects. I've tried to re- write that resolution where it's generic enough, so that as long as it's, it's in that resolution, then we can, uh...
Okay.
We can proceed with whatever project y'all decide, but this is what makes up the 2,350,000.
Okay, so we're committing to the money, and this is the potential projects, but, but that could possibly still change if, if we needed to.
Mm-hmm, it could possibly, yes.
Well, now, most of those are already...
I know, some of them are already ongoing, I understand that.
Yeah, some of them have already been underway.
Yeah. But these are the projects that we, we had discussed back at, uh, in the spring during budget process. We have removed a couple of items off of that list. Uh, originally, that project total was about 3 million, a little over 3 million dollars, and we've cut it down to the 2,350,000 dollars.
Any, let's see, we, we've got our motion, I don't want to, don't worry. Any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you.
Item seven, consider awarding bids for the re-roofing of Station Number Four and some fire hose for the fire department's sponsor, Chief John Kendrick.
Mayor and council, would you like to look at these collectively? Excuse me. You want me to talk to them about both?
Sure, if you want to do that, it'll be fine.
The first bid's for redoing the roof on Station Four on Eagle Drive. It includes tearing the shingles off and putting an architectural-style shingle back on it. Uh, we had six bids on that, and I recommend GR Industrial Roofing on that one at 11,490 dollars. The second bid was for a fire hose for ladder two. Uh, we had two bids on that, with lowest bid being, uh, it's not totaled on my sheet, it's 10,800 or 689,000 dollars.
Say, say the total one more time.
I think it's 10,689. I thought it was totaled on that sheet.
Let's see.
And I would seek your approval for both.
All right, thank you, chief. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Some moved.
We have our motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Our motion and second, any discussion by the council?
Where's GR Industrial Roofing from?
They're out, uh, McMinnville.
What was your, what was your budget estimate for that re-roofing?
Uh, originally, it was 23,000, and this did, it was lower than the others, uh, as the gentleman supplied me a list of references, and I've talked to about eight individuals that he's done projects for, and everybody's been very positive about the individual and the quality of work he did.
Licensed bonded, all that kind of shit.
Licensed bonded, that was in the bid document.
Just for the record, that was 10,984 instead of 684.
I was trying to remember, sorry.
No, I just thought we'd say that.
Well, chief, uh... Do we have any further comments by the, uh, council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Chief, item eight, consider approval of a change order to the contract with WNO Construction Company to install two new large-capacity pumps and two smaller-capacity pumps at the water intake facility on Center Hill Lake, sponsor Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I have a proposal for your consideration tonight, and I apologize for getting it late. It, we just negotiated with the contractor today and got prices, and spent all morning trying to come up with a recommendation to make to you guys. Um, WNO Construction's doing the water project intake, uh, project, where we're redoing the whole intake at the lake. In, in their project, they're to take out all the pumps, at the raw water pumps, and replace those, and it was set up to take two small pumps out at a time, put two new big pumps in, then, and then take the new two big pumps out, or old pumps out, and then put two at a time. As it's, uh, and, and that was, we'd come up with that scenario a couple of years ago when we were doing the design project. As the lake has continued to drop, it's sort of made me more and more concerned, because as the lake levels go down, the less water we're able to pump out, and, uh, the two big pumps now are, they're normally about 15 million gallons a day, and currently, they're pumping about thirteen and a half, but we have, a few years ago, we had a capabilities to kick on an extra pump, a smaller pump, so we, we would have that capabilities and capacities. Now, with the lake going down, and, and the contract calling for them to take two at a ti- two out at a time, we'd be left with, uh, just two large pumps while they take the two small ones out. That's, makes me a little nervous and a little concerned, and I asked the contractor what it would cost, and how much time can we do it with just, uh, taking one at a time and, and leave us that third pump there? Uh, he's given us a price now to do that, and, uh, that price was 22,213 dollars, and he's also given us another price that if we, if we do the first two, and then go and, and do one at a time for the second two, it'll be the 22. If we decide to do both of those, second two pumps at one time, they'll, we, we can save 4,000 and some dollars and give us a price of 18,234, which is a savings for the manufacturer's rep to have to come down just one time for the two-pump installations versus one at a time. Uh, the pumps are to be delivered next week, and so, uh, we'd like to try to get a decision, and, and I'd recommend to spend the money to do it. It will give us the, we're still going to have the, uh, just two pumps available for about a two-week window, instead of a six or seven-week window. So basically, it's buying us some assurance and some peace of mind, uh, is what we're trying to accomplish. I'd recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and our second. Discussion by the council?
So, you're going to do the, the 18,000 dollar, uh, I've got lost between...
We would like to get authorization to do the 22,234. After we do the first two, those go, well, they'll be two, uh, uh, trying to think the capacity of those two, they're going to be two new big pumps that'll give us, one of them will give us full capacity. A big, uh, the 7 million gallons capacity at the low lake levels. The old pumps were designed at a summer pool level, so as those drop, you can't pump, there's, the capacity drops. These will give us full capacity at the low lake level. When we get those done, we'll look at it and evaluate, are we comfortable now to let you take both of these out, because we've got the two new ones in? If we are, we would do that, and, and their price would drop down to 18, because they would save on the manufacturer's rep cost coming back two times.
All right, I understand.
It would just have to come once.
Any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no further discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Mr. Shipley. We'll get done shortly, hopefully. I know you've been called worse. It's probably been a while. Getting close, we're getting close. Uh, at this time, we have our hearing of citizens and door delegations, and we open up our lectern for up to three minutes for our citizens to come and speak about, um, ideas and, uh, concerns that they have in our city, and at this time, I'll open up the floor if anyone has any comments. Please identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Okay, hi, I'm Deborah. I think the nerves would stop after a while, um, but, um, since the city government is for the wise and efficient use of energy, as evidenced by Mr. Peake and council members' encouragement of all of us to do free TVA energy audits, I'm here today to ask if the city government would consider helping citizens further to reduce electricity use by purchasing and loading out an electricity monitor. These two component devices have one part that's on the meter and one part indoors, giving real-time feedback in both dollars and cents and kilowatt-hours. Tests in Ontario, the West Coast, and other places have shown that the kind of information, this kind of information, can help householders reduce electricity use by as much as 5 to 20 percent, which, if we go by the average residential customer use mentioned in the Herald Citizen article, that would be about 5 to 21 dollars a month, or 6 to 250 dollars a year. Um, part of these savings would be from those tricky hidden energy drains that are not easy to find and stop, even with an energy audit. Um, and since fiduciary responsibility is part of what you have to look at, I'm sure you're wondering about the price. Um, the low-end cost for a unit is around 135 dollars. Um, so, in part, I'm asking this in the spirit of libraries, since everyone does not need to own one to make good use of this technology, so thank you for thinking about that.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Deborah, for bringing that idea. I think it's a good idea. One of the things, uh, that, uh, I know, that I've heard mentioned before, I think, is really good about energy conservation, I mean, there's, it's multifaceted, obviously, but, uh, when people save money on their electric bills, then they have money to spend in other areas and help stimulate our economy. That's a good thing.
Locally, locally.
Inside the city, man.
Yeah, I, I was going to say this, to back that up, I mean, I was in retail one time, and, and I know how hard business is, and, you know, I, I would, as a council member and as a citizen, highly encourage everyone to, uh, to shop locally, uh, when you can, and, and, you know, everybody's going to buy certain things for Christmas, and, and things that you can buy in our city, as opposed to, I mean, sometimes it's fun to go outside the city and shopping and all those kinds of things, but, but the things you can buy here and, and support our local retailers, both small and large, um, you know, in, in these times, it, it is going to be very much needed, so I would encourage, uh, that, and hopefully, our chamber, I don't know if they have a, a program in place, I know we, we've had that before, shop local, or shop Putnam, or shop Highlands, or, or something. Do, do you have a plan in place, maybe, for something along those lines for this, for this season, or, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I was just curious, yes, sure, if...
We know George would love to talk.
You've got three minutes.
You've got three minutes.
You've got three minutes.
I've never gone on that, not only been three minutes. Yes, we've been looking at ways that we can better serve. We've had these problems in the past, and we'll look at those again. Uh, while I'm up here, can I just say two words? Thank you, uh, on behalf, well, I can't say just two words. On behalf of the chamber, uh, for your vision, your leadership, and your partnership, uh, on this significant historic venture, thank y'all very much, but yes, Councilman Shelton, we are... y'all very much. But yes, Councilman Shelton, we are looking at ways we can serve our members, serve the community, serve the retail community. That's, that's where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Couple of quick comments, too. Back to Ms. Deborah's comments about this, it's a shame that our electric department director, Tony Peak, left early tonight. Would have been nice. You know, I could see that that might be something that we could, a little program we might could put together, and maybe get three or four of those, and have them to where, you know, people could call in, and we could maybe get a volunteer, somebody that could go out and help them, or get the electric department, somebody to look at them. I think that could be something we could look at, so appreciate you.
Tony had to leave early to be somewhere else, but I'll be glad to talk to him about that, and he's got plenty of money, I'm sure.
Yeah, $135, I mean, I was really surprised, that's...
I'd just like to, I know James Mills is up at Cookeville Regional Medical Center watching this TV, because he doesn't have anything better to watch.
He's in a lot of pain. I doubt he wants any more pain.
Yeah, but anyways, James Mills had surgery yesterday, he came out doing well, he's recovering. He's our planning department, director of our planning department. We had a planning commission luncheon today without him, and it was a weird place without James. So we'd like to pray, or send our thoughts and prayers to him and his family as he recovers, and he's, we're lucky to have him, blessed to have him, and good to know that everything went well today, or yesterday. So speedy recovery to him, because I know Ken and Jane would love to have him back as soon as possible, so.
Very good. Just one other comment, going back to what Ricky's comments, his careful consideration of this investment in the Highlands Business Park, I think all of us have felt that way. And it, for me, has been something that you have to look pretty far out into the future to realize the benefit that that will have for the community. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, and it's not easy to obligate those kinds of funds on something that's not going to have an immediate return. But I applaud everybody for supporting that, and I think that in the long run, probably even after we're all gone from the council, of course, that we'll begin to see the benefits in our community from that.
I think it's hard to consider these things, because there are no guarantees. But the only guarantee that we are afforded, as relates to not investing, is not getting someone. So if we spend the funds in order to do that, then we dramatically improve our chances. However, we stand still and do nothing, we, we know at the end...
We'll go backwards.
We know what the end result is.
We won't stand still, we'll go backwards if we do not step out and go forward.
Well, I have one comment that I'd like to make tonight, as we look forward to Thanksgiving next week. I'm very thankful for the city of Cookeville and this area that we live in, particularly when I look, I hear what's going on across the nation. And I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving next weekend, and that we bear in mind the blessings that we have in this area of the country. And I'm grateful to live right here in Cookeville, Tennessee.
Amen to that. Any further comments from the council? Any further comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I almost voted, yes. Yeah.
Number eight.